And the very, Mr. Heimer, to be here to report to you on that on the fourteenth of August. But to begin with the order to proceed on the twenty seventh, he came and did update the last on April twenty fourth, and then give you back on August fourteenth to give you this status on the report for the USDA. He's doing both at the simultaneously. As you had approved, the sewer modeling, so he has come back to report to you on that, as well as the report for the USDA application, so the fourteenth report. The water projects are going forward. In-Ness will be here on the fourteenth as well, because you have a well that needs to be done. You will approve that. They're going to be here to take care of that one. Staffing for I program, we're working with TCQ and the county as well. The references to issues that Sarah's having with the San Antonio River. The corner store is working on the infrastructure there. As you know, the demolition is starting, and we're really excited about that. Last but not least, you have the order you complained for. They said you helped us put together it. So if you have any complaints, or citizens have any complaints that are coming on the phone, or they walk in here, we're using this form to do so. I can make copies in the mailbox, but there's also a copy here. So if you have any complaints or concerns, they can probably wherever people give us that. So that gives us a timeframe, and we can be able to track them a lot better. But the time, it is what the time. I am supposed to issue you my budget on end of this month at the next city council meeting, and that'll be July twenty fourth. But here is a, if you look at the revised draft, let me get my things right, on the calendar, this is the calendar. And what I'm proposing, I'm just revise the, revise this, you're revising, revise me. What it is, is that we're looking, we have to have two public hearings. We have to actually get our tax rate, which is probably will have until the first week of August. And so what I am proposing, that you all two be on the state of vote, there's no action tonight, is that the city council will be prepared to meet every Tuesday and Thursday of the month of August. This will allow us to get our two hearings in, to have a budget workshops, to have city council meetings, as well as meet with staff as they come before you. The calendar goes all the way into September. I believe you adopted it last year about September ninth, and this year we proposed to adopt it about September eleventh. There is a tidying notice I have to put in the paper, so that backs up some things. So this is what, an aggressive schedule, we're hoping that we can adhere to. It will be on the action item for the next council meeting to approve a budget schedule calendar, so we can post these meetings appropriately, invite the right staff to come, and to give people the notices and records to our financial advisor, our auditor, to see if they can make these meetings. So this is just for you to review. Do you have any questions on myself, or my staff?
I have two questions.
This is next.
One has to do with the USDA application.
Okay.
I understand that it's been authorized to proceed, but I think the public's expectation is that it's a short-term thing, and it really isn't. So at what point will we see a timeline for the things that have to be done to accomplish reports that we have accepted?
Well, what has happened, Councilwoman, is that you did not have a location of all your sewer itself. So you were running things simultaneously. You were locating them physically, you're doing that, as well as doing the projection, reference calculations with the engineer. So it takes some time for the engineer to report that. That report only takes, it took six to nine months to start, which is finished the mountain project. And so he's trying to work things simultaneously, and work us to do that. Then once the engineer's report is completed, then we submit that to USDA for them to come with their comments, that, and whatever they're going to do, so that they can do their projections. The nice thing that's happening right about now is that in what was doing, even to that thing that the father reported, that In-Ness did, it talked about projections, but it was just projections. They couldn't point to a specific project. But since that time, we've had several specific projects that have concrete numbers. The revenue says that they'll have seven hundred and forty units over the next five to six years. We had a project parts project, they had three hundred, and I believe there's a list project, there's another three hundred houses. So now we have specific projects we can report to, and these calculations have to be seen.
So at some point we'll get a timeline for those projects, or you won't receive that, so that...
A timeline for which project comes off?
For the projects that need to be completed prior to, um, prior to the USDA application being approved, if it's approved.
There are actually over twenty-two steps that happen with the USDA. We're only in step one.
That's what I'm saying.
We're only in step one.
The expectations are that it's a short-term project.
That the application is a short-term?
Some of the public, some of the citizens think it's a, it's not a tomorrow thing. It's another year and a half or so, is that correct?
Application process can be up to eighteen months for the application process.
Because we've been there before, but it was canceled several years.
Well, from what I can find historically, that you applied, that the application that you put in was all to say, we're interested, and there was a dollar amount of about three point two million dollars on the application, and that was it. They did not go any further. You did, you did put a professional engineering report, and you couldn't have done one, because you didn't have the sewer modeling project. So we're still in the step one, we're still in step one. It's about an eighteen-month process to do that. And then for the eighteen months, it can be anywhere to another nine to ten months before the approval, approval. But you remember, that's eighteen months, they say, let me take a look. And so it is a long, twenty-two-step process, but we're only in the beginning stages, because we don't even know, we don't even know what the actual amount is. The number that was presumed to be one, it was three point two million. It could be more, but we don't have a report. This report can be anywhere between a hundred and twenty pages of the engineered document, it's quite comprehensive.
Heimer, is there a deadline for us to submit for that USDA, in this last step?
It's an open, it's an open application, so there's not like a deadline. However, funding comes and goes with the federal government, their fiscal year is the same as ours. So monies will be assessed, but right now, we don't have a dollar figure that they're asking for.
My second question has to do with the changes in staff. At what point will we get an organizational chart where the titles and the names of people have a lot of changes?
If the next, what's required in the budget is for me to submit an organizational chart, you have one in your organizational chart, you should have one.
We have one, it's an old one.
Yeah, mine, you have mine on the next city council meeting. It'll be with my budget, if I submit an organizational chart with the budget.
For the next week? He says for the next week.
Yes, me, I'll submit the entire budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the position you said Andrew had now?
Andrew is water supervisor, is the sewer plant supervisor.
Okay, now, what, first going to ask, but if you're...
Andreas is water, Andrew will be sewer. So he's physically at the plant as well.
Okay, so then is that making you overlook another? Who was the supervisor, or I don't know?
Yes, he was the interest supervisor, yes, there, he said Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to go on to item... Two I, the request by George Gonzalez, owner of eighteen fifty-two Sunset Road, to waive the standard fees for a connection on the sewer line for a new residential construction. This one's out this term.
Thank you, Houston. I'm sorry. Council members, mayor, Mr. Turner. Can I give you a cue paper?
Yes.
Council members, mayor, city manager, President of the George, I'm building a new house at eighteen fifty-two Sunset Drive, toward Will Davis. The property was previously occupied by a home home. At the time, I paid for a new water and sewer connection. Vicente Grego installed the sewer line. He did not tap the line into the street like it should have been. The reason was that the street had just been sealed closed, keeping it in place. Instead, he ran the line, the sewer line, along the property line, and put two turns in it, and then tapped into the neighbor's sewer line, Arturo Garcia sewer line. I have had problems with the way the sewer line was installed with two turns, multiple times. The line has clogged up various times. I discussed this issue with Vicente Grego several, several times. He would not bludge, he would never did anything. He is no longer employed by the city. The problem was never corrected. Every time I have a problem with a line, the employees come out and cannot believe the way the line was installed, until I show them the drawing. I spoke, here a while back, I came and spoke to the acting city manager, which at the time was from Orange City, about the existing sewer line. He took Andy Johnson's place when he resigned. I was told to talk to the mayor, and I did. We discussed that the sewer line was installed incorrectly, and also discussed the problems that the neighbor and I were having due to the line not being to code. We discussed it, and I was told that it would be corrected. I met with Reevaschis, which is now retired with the city. We looked at the sewer line, I showed him my drawing. He agreed it was wrong. Andres Vada with the city was supposed to put the camera at the end of the line. I don't know if he did. I was told at the time that the line would be corrected, and to let them know when I was ready. I spoke to Andres Vada, and let him know that I was ready. He said, well, he needed the okay to go ahead and do it right. Then, when he told me that, I came and I spoke to the mayor, and Mrs. Turner, about the existing sewer line that was installed incorrectly. Mrs. Turner advised me that it was new construction, and that I would have to pay for a new sewer connection. Keep in mind that I have a sewer connection already. Only thing, it was put in wrong. I did not feel that I should have to pay for a new connection, as I addressed this issue multiple times to Mr. Grego, Rudy, Andres, and the mayor. I also met with Andy Valentes, a new employee with the city, took him out there, and again, sewer line is not in code, which everybody agrees. I would like to have a new sewer connection installed at no cost. That's all I'm asking for. All the existing houses on Sunset Drive, next to my property, and across the street, have sewer connections in the street, not along the property line with turns. If the sewer line is not corrected, I'm going to assume, again, that the city is responsible for unclogging it. And with this new house that I'm building, I have to construct a new driveway all the way to the street. When that line gets clogged up, and the city has to dig, well, they're going to tear up my new concrete driveway. Are they going to be responsible for that new driveway? See, this is going to be an ongoing issue if it doesn't correct, if it doesn't get corrected now. Also, according to the city sewer regulations, chapter fifty-two, it says, city senator sewer should be connected to an existing system, and anyone authorized by the city to inspect. And then it also goes to say, all connections must meet national code standards. The installer may be required to remove all materials if irregularities occur. Then again, if you go back to the code, section seven oh one dash three, separate sewer connection, separate sewer connection. Every building having plumbing fixtures installed and extended for human habitation, occupation, or use or premises, a building on a street alley rezement in which there is a public sewer shall have a separate connection with a sewer where located on the same lot. Multiple buildings shall not be prohibited from connecting to a common building sewer that connects to a public service. Orders for section ten oh three is directed by a code official. And again, all I'm asking, Councilman, is to correct the problem that was run, that was done wrong, and that I've been having a whole lot of trouble with, and the neighbor. And I've asked, and asked, and asked, and nothing ever gets done. Like, some other issues that I've asked the city. I come, and I come, and I come, and nothing ever gets done. Also, I would like to clarify, like, on the paper for the miniature agenda, it says that I'm requesting a new connection. I don't, it's not a new connection, I already have a sewer connection. Only thing that was installed wrong cannot be code.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, you already have the connection, you have the meter, so it's only the street part that needs to be redone, is that correct?
Right, I've had this connection forever, but she's instead tapping into the street like it should be for code.
Yeah.
Gregor ran along the property line, put two turns in it, and tapped into the neighbor's sewer line, which you can't do.
Yeah, so the mobile home is gone, so you're...
Yes, ma'am, I'm constructing a house there.
So it's one connection that you're going to have to the street.
Right, all the others have a connection the right way. All the houses on there have a connection straight into the sewer, not along the right-of-way with turns, that tapped into the neighbor.
I have a question for Miss Cindy, and she may not know the answer, because she probably, I'm not sure if she worked in that area when Mr. Diego was doing this, but was that extended practice at the time when Mr. Diego was here?
Miss Councilwoman? Um, I wasn't here when that happened. I could not answer that. I don't understand why that happened, but...
Okay, well, if this is not...
What is it going to tell, I'm sorry, sir, what is it going to tell to correct it?
This is what I understand. I understood that at that time, when that mobile home was put in, that that was the best solution to have a sewer at that property. Um, this is, this is what I understand.
No, but what does it tell to correct it, not what, not what?
From what I, and again, from what I understand, apparently, the sewer stops right there.
No.
Where, this is what I understand, I could be wrong. But from what I understand, it stops right there where Mr., the neighbors have. And that's why it's teed off to furnish sewer to the mobile home.
That's what it is, that was...
Now, if they have to correct it, from what I understand, if they're going to have to dig very deep, because it's very deep, to where the line, the meter is at.
But again, if all the other houses have the same sewer connection straight into the sewer, there's no excuse that I can't have the same thing. And the sewer does not stop there. It continues, the house on, the other side of mine has sewer. So it doesn't stop there.
What did Mr. Baransis say that needed to be done, when he...
He just said it was cor, it was wrong, sir. It's wrong according to code. See, that's why I gave you that paper.
No, but she, they said...
Did you say, did you ever think to fix it?
I'm sorry?
What did it take to fix it, to correct the problem?
Well, you'd have to dig up the street, and run the line straight into the street, like it should have been done day one, like I say, like all the other houses around there. And see, the neighbor archer's constantly having troubles, because it's tapped into his line, and you can't do that.
Yeah.
Why is he wearing a job, so that, in there? See, once up for that driveway and everything, when the city has a problem, and they have to break it, it's almost going to have to put me in a driveway also. You see, that's where it is, along the property line. But see, community, there's no excuse, because all the other houses, everybody says it's deep. How is it that all the other houses have a sewer connection straight into the? See, no one else got told it was too deep. I can't do it. But see, I'm being very honest. They just had seal code it that street, and that's why Diego didn't want to cut it. And every time I had trouble, you know, I wouldn't get anywhere. Well, I haven't got anywhere. Just like the other issues that have come, it never gets done.
Are there any questions for that?
If I can, if I can. Apparently, historically, because I did a little research, the two properties, the property adjacent to it is, is the last property on a sewer lot. People further down the street are on separate fields.
On the road.
Yeah. So this property is right next to the last property on that line. At one point in time, both of those properties were owned by the, by the same owner. I subdivided, I don't think they applied it correctly back then, before, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, to sell it to, just to...
The only ones that don't have, they have a pump, is the two houses on the end. That I know for a fact is that's the reason that, that owner, that gentleman sold that house, because he was, I was having trouble with the pump. So one on that end, the two, but all these, this way, everybody has sewer straight into the street.
So the issue could be that it has to be a new line put in. It's a new construction line, it needs to be put in, I agree. But if, if you went and say that it happened, and you're probably going to discover a lot of different things that happened. I've discovered some issues on my water side that happened as well. I can't speak to what it was. But a lot of what to do, are we have a grandfather, or we can connect to what existed? Or we can do something new? But here, this is a new construction, a new residential construction, so you need to have a line. The mobile home's done, and the new pump is done, and new construction. There's going to be a cost, the city has to do, so a cost to wait to connect. I think the fee is fifteen grand?
Yes.
There'd be a fifteen grand for new sewer line, and that's worth. Is there, I don't have...
I don't, I don't have a sewer line, I have a sewer line, she, I have one.
The policy?
Yeah.
It's probably be a lot, two thousand five hundred...
So if, if the line has been done right, correct?
I have a line there, that's what I'm saying. It's not my fault.
But if, if it had been done correctly, and now he's building on there, is that still considered new? Although he's already got the line there?
No.
It's a whole new box, because...
No, no, no.
No, no, he's already got the line.
The line, that line, that line is not there.
It's there, I'm there, I can take one of you.
She's saying he wants to use that line.
The line is there, she's saying it's not there. I'll take it tomorrow and show you.
What I'm saying is that the line that's there is connected, joined with the, the property adjacent to it.
But you can't do that according to code.
You can't.
You can't.
I mean, I love it, it's over different places, and it's been like that for some time.
No, but look at that paper I gave you.
And I believe Andrew said that that sewer line was buried down twenty feet. And nobody puts a sewer line in twenty feet.
Andy told me he didn't know, nobody knows. I don't, I don't know if somebody's getting twenty feet, I don't believe it is twenty feet. You see, there's nothing on records either. He told me, nobody knows. But I mean, yet, again, all the other houses have a connection like it should be according to code. Straight, every resident, every lot, that paper, a straight connection, not tapped into the neighbor with turns. See, all I want to do, I'm sorry?
It sounds like the city took a shortcut, and we need to correct it. If the city isn't correct, we need to pay for it.
Yes, ma'am, if it would have been done right, see, we wouldn't have this trouble. And like I say, Mr. Theo, to be honest, you, if someone who actually did it like that, the city's found, I'm not going to clean it no more. And then when I pour that drive, and someone asks the, you're either going to have to go underneath tunnel, or break my concrete, so it's going to cost the city more money.
Okay, well, with the way you're building the house, does that line, I mean, it can stay in the same position, right?
Right, that's where this, see, it's under the driveway, but and I have to pour the driveway all the way to the street, by city pouring the...
Yes, but right now, it can stay in the same place, it can be used, that way, except for the street part.
But, but I mean, I'm going to, I have all the trouble, so I'll only use it that way. I'm going to have council trouble.
No, that's what I'm saying, but you already have a meter, I mean, no, that's water, I'm sorry. You already have an existing line, so does it have to be moved for the deconstruction? That's what I'm asking.
What they have to do is, the pipe is right in front of it on the street, that will be closed off, like that.
Do you have that drawing that I gave Mrs. Turner?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, don't say I gave her a drawing that shows exactly what he did.
No, but she's talking about what has to be done and corrected. So he would have to cut the line, tap it, so it doesn't go to that into the street. And they have to run a line from the connection to the middle of the street.
All you're going to, all you're going to run is maybe a fifteen-foot line, from the middle of the street where the sewer is, into my property you go in. Maybe a foot or eighteen inches at the most. And then I take it from there. And that's all I'm asking, I just want to be, I don't want to have to hassle this anymore, I'm getting too old. And if it would have been done right, see, I, and you come and ask, and ask, and ask them. Like, I've been here before in different issues, how many times? And nothing ever gets done.
For the record, Mr. Gonzalez, I don't ever remember telling you that the city would pay for it. What I did tell you, I put you in connections with Andy Johnson, and then Andy brought in Andres, and y'all had the meter.
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, with Rudy and them, it's...
Because you said, although that I said it would be great.
No, no, that Rudy, then it would be corrected, you know?
Yeah.
That's all, see, everybody did go and look at it, and then say... And everybody, and then, and this was going to put the camera, so I assumed that that's when I came. Well, no, we're not going to do it no more. So I mean, line issue, and it's wrong, and if you look at your ordinance from the city, it says the same thing. You can't do that, and if you did it wrong, then you have to fix it. I have this paper here, if you'd like to look at it. You know, it clearly says the city is liable, and they got to fix it, it was wrong.
You were told that they would fix it, but then those individuals left office, or left whatever, meaning it was your problem.
See, I'm back to square one, I mean, see, just like the other issues that have come here before, nothing's ever got done, it's been years and years and years. See, I was here a while back, then over a year, nothing's been done. And you know it.
Okay, let me go on to, then. I'm going to move up item three I, which is consideration in action to approve the request by George Gonzalez, owner of eighteen fifty-two Sunset Road, to waive the standard fees for a connection with sewer line for a new residential construction.
Does the council come ask first?
Oh, I'm sorry, citizens' comments, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. The other one's up.
Mayor, Council. I'm Fred Gonzalez, and I live in Florisville. It would appear to me that, you mind? Mr. Gonzalez has already paid for a proper and underlying proper connection of a sewer line on this property. It has to be his fault that the city did not do it properly. Therefore, for the city to correct their mistake underlying it, it's not precedent in this situation. So I have very strong, yes, any citizen concern that you approve his request.
Thank you. Is there any other citizens' comments?
I make a motion to approve the request by George Gonzalez, owner of eighteen fifty-two Sunset Road, to waive the standard fees for a connection on the sewer line for a new residential construction.
I second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gieto. Second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Madam Mayor, just for verification, I had not participated in this discussion, but I have to get a clarification on the records and send these examples and managers and member of the house. Is this not a formidable item, where we can have a private contractor to make the installation to the city sewer line in the middle of the street?
The, the way the procedure works is, if they, if they purchase, if they buy, get the new sewer line, we install it. We...
You take it from the house to the middle of the street?
We take it from the service to the manhole.
Which is like the angels.
To wherever the service is to make.
Just for clarity, where is the service? Because I've had, the property, I've owned, and my contractor came from the house to the middle of the street.
And again, from what I understand, it's from the service to the make.
Okay, I don't know where, what's the word, service to me?
Where they put the meter.
This is on sewer, sewer has no meter.
Same thing. Same thing.
And the reason I'm asking you the question is, we expect private contractors, whether it's the general or the sewer contractor, comply with city standards. So, for learning from this episode, what is it that you need to get a permit for? So, for learning from this episode, what is it that you need to get a permit for?
The sewer con, the plumber will run their sewer line from the service to the house, and they do not cover it until our inspector does the inspection.
Okay, so when you say service, it's the sewer line in the middle of the road?
Yes, well, no, again, the service is where the meter is at, the meter that's in our east end.
So there's no meters in the?
But where the, where the, where the main hall is, it goes, it stops, we do not go into private property to do the installation.
That's why I'm trying to be clear of what it is that we're fixing and what the procedure is.
Who does it connect to? If I may, if I may, uh, what you're connecting, we connect to the property line, uh, Mr. Gonzalez already has a plumber that will connect it from where we take it to the property, and then takes it to physical levels itself. So as much as anything dealing with the public part of it is actually on the street side, we have to get it to this property. And so what this will do is disconnect, and we will abandon the double connection, so we will isolate that, abandon that, and we'll establish a connection, a direct connection from the street, this little, to the property line, and his plumber is to be there and ready to connect, may I take it to the main hall itself.
So the city permit, when the contractor, or the owner comes there, the permit for the contractor, which is where, just to the edge of the property line?
Yes.
And then the two have to coordinate, you get from the property line to the middle of the street?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that set out in the permit, or does that have to be done?
It's on the checklist.
It's on the checklist.
But again, this was existing, so.
Thank you, now we're gonna go on to item. We have item J, I think, two J, the request to waive permit fees for the Florisville Chamber of Commerce Building being relocated onto FISD school property, and it's gonna be handed out in.
Uh, Mr. Byk, I could make it, it's a voting vice birthday, but Ted is here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. Um, one of the requests that's happening, and it's kind of like a twofold, two different things happening all at the same time, uh, as you know, the Chamber of Commerce Building has to be relocated because of the construction of the, truck, I believe, the gas point, or, yes, gas point, so it has to be located. Uh, they've done the permitting, I think they've got the money there, uh, they have actually done that, but there's an outstanding issue that came before this council in October, uh, in reference to the business bureau and funds that may be owed to them, and there's others that. And so, um, Mr. Byk has asked that we do the exchange, say what those fees are, and the council has not taken a position on it, they don't even present the numbers, but they were asking that these fees be associated with the monies that we do, I'm not saying that they are, and that, that was on the agenda tonight to be discussed, but they're asking to do that in reference to the board this permit, as well as a connection that's gonna go forward, that'll probably come for you, for them to connect for water and sewer underneath one of these lines, uh, they connect on legal, the H and B side, uh, at a cost between somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. So they're requesting, uh, repeat, the permit fee itself is, is that six, eight hundred dollars, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the bottom.
Six hundred, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, and six hundred, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Um, they are ready to start their permits, and they can relocate to their own apartment condition, and they are asking that we pass it forward.
Is this gonna be a permit?
Yes, we have a, um, long-term lease holder here with the school again, the school used to own the property where it is now.
So you're just asking for the permanent fees you paid, or were the nineteen thousand dollars that you addressed?
Uh, the permit fees at this point in time, but I'm questioning to come back, Mr. Byk has had some ideas for the, we started with the permit fee of six hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Are we doing this for budget, or?
Uh, this permit fee is originally registered with the mayor.
So the total that they're asking for, son?
The total right now is six hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, and, uh, Mr. Byk probably is preparing an email, uh, he would have presented himself, and that's to the cost of running that sewer and water line to this property on his school side, um, and I'd say that fee is about between ten to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, they, staff has not got to start it yet, because we haven't talked about the price, but right now, just the permit fees, so they could actually.
So they're gonna come back and ask for the way you did those fees?
Uh, I think they want to roll it into, um, the alternative fees that the chamber may be doing in reference to, uh, the business bureau and those kind of things, and so that would be a topic that we need to put on the agenda at that time. So the big money at that time, in exchange, I'm not saying we owe money or we don't.
That's a part that needs to be done, for them to go, otherwise they're gonna have.
Well, this permit is actually having to move, they have to move. They gotta go.
I understand that.
It's about to be dimmed down.
But for them, they can move the building, but they won't be able to operate if they don't have the sewer and water connection.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a time for us to do, it wouldn't happen, the connection wouldn't happen very quickly, they're, they're first, from what I told Mr. Byk, I told him earlier today when we met, uh, someone named Chamber meeting, uh, the first order of businesses, they need to move, the second order of businesses, they need to connect, but they're doing this construction themselves, I believe they might be paying, and, uh, the manager has to be some settlement, and they have to, city where you're really not moving, they have to do some structural things in reference to stabilize this, so they have some other things they need to do, uh, to foundation, to prepare this for the sewer, but they're gonna come to next time, they're in the agenda to discuss the, the connection with the water, so.
So y'all are already prepared to be closed for one?
Um, I'm, I'm really not sure, I don't have a long way need to be, but we're gonna still operate.
Any citizens' comments? Okay, then I'm gonna ask for, um, consideration in action. Let me see.
Mayor, I move to waive the permit fees for the Florisville Chamber of Commerce Building being relocated onto FISD, uh, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
That's six sixty-nine seventy-four.
Yes, that's correct.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, second by Councilman Gereto, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do business. Three A, consideration in action to approve an amendment and renewal to the agreement between the City of Florisville and Decent Animal Hospital. Mr. Turner?
Yes, um, I'm sorry, I'm just giving a minute. Um, Mr. Teo has actually married myself, as well as the city secretary, and as well as the board fee, the renewal of their agreement needs to be between the city, they do all of our issues in reference to that, and I think they're proposing their fighting, and they are asking for an increase in their fees, it has not been increased since Decent Animal Hospital, and stuff like that.
I think they're going from twenty to thirty, Brian, per animal. To the first one.
They went from twenty to thirty, and then from ten to fifteen?
Yes. And it's just an extension, because we already have the agreement with them, uh, they do all of our animal control, uh, all of our, and I think, according to CJ, the price is pretty reasonable, correct? It's pretty reasonable, but we don't have an offer at the moment, so we're asking to renew the agreement that we have with Decent, we appreciate all the power that they've done with us, and our many animals, and to leave step of our animal control, we wanna make sure, this hasn't happened since two thousand and nine.
Any questions? Citizens' comments? They can add a motion?
Mayor, I'm looking through the agenda, can you move the agreement from the City of Florisville to Decent Animal Hospital and corporate?
I have a motion by Councilman Gereto, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item three B, consideration in action to adopt a resolution authorizing a designated representative appointed by the City of Florisville to the Florisville Reinvestment Zone Number One to function as an authorized signature on the tax investment fund for purpose of transferring amounts, amounts in the fund to the Riverbend Development Corporation in accordance with the tri-party agreement, Mr. Roosevelt.
Mayor, this item pretty much has the agenda states it says what we're trying to do. Uh, you'll recall that earlier this year, when we got into the audit process, we were clear, and we got a letter from Bank of New York Mellon, that funds were not being transferred entirely, uh, it turns out that we have a city account, the city account is being transferred to the TIF account, and the TIF account, which is the river corridor, Morgan Bank, and you transfer that money to Bank of Mellon, this is specifically provided authority for the purpose of the officer's time.
If, if I may, let's leave the E's, just, bottom line, um, the TIF, um, is Riverbend, and they have to pay their, their taxes, and what has happened is that, uh, there are checks, they, we put their money into the TIF account, but the city is not a signature on that, but according to the Bank of New York, they're looking for payment from us, the payment was delayed, uh, Paul Sack and most of the people were there. What has happened is that you elected three members to be on that board, they have selected Mr. Baker to be the treasurer, which means he gets to sign, which will be representing ourselves, and so we would be able to say, yes, to sign a check, and it's timely, and that we won't be receiving, um, letters, FedExes, and things saying that the payments are not being paid. Now, this is a unique tip, they refinance, and they have, due to name Mr. Allison, is that correct, Christopher Allison, that does their money for them, in essence, they will take whatever fees you can, they collect in reference to taxes as part of the payment, even if it's not enough, which is not enough. And so, this is a way that we can do that, because we, once we put it into their account, we have no way of getting it out, and so, um, rather than cost a lot of fees, and this is the first time they met, was it last night they met? Uh, they've met, and they haven't met, I believe, since, uh, twenty eleven, they haven't met, so this is the first time the board has met, the board's representatives, and so what you're saying is that you're agreed to allow your representative, Mr. Baker, to be a signature on that, and we need to be able to do that, as well as, I believe, the next item as well, is all along with that.
They go together?
Uh, they go together, you did not.
They do go together, but I, I do wanna make sure.
We get two separate motions? Two separate motions, right?
The council needs to understand one thing, because this came up at the audit last year, it was a question that was raised in the last year, not, not the current year, it's an audit report, but last year's audit report, this money goes into a city account first, and that account stands in the name of this council and the name of this city, and it goes from that account, then to the Riverbend account, and then from the Riverbend account to Bank of Mellon.
That's the correct, because the, the check count, when the check comes in from TIF, it goes directly to a bank account of TIF, it doesn't come into the city's bank account.
Yeah, it's a city, it's a city TIF account, the City of Florisville line, that, that account was established just for the TIF, but the check is written out of that, was transferred out of that, it doesn't go to that, it goes to.
Do we write that check, or do we go through any of those checks?
It's a transfer.
It's a transfer, and I, I'm only trying to make it, we didn't specifically have an account that had any money, we thought it went directly to TIF, but it turns out, we're in a free station, and so then it goes to the corridor, to Riverbend, and from that, but we were getting the mandate of the city, because it wasn't getting to the next step, so this is designed to answer the initial, to solve two problems.
And having Mr. Baker on there is no conflict, correct?
Yeah, I agree with this one.
Yeah, because he's representing, he is your representative.
Do we need to name him as the representative?
Yes, they named him as a treasurer.
As part of the motion, they named?
Yes. So most, that, that was agreed to informally after the last meeting, so that's why you're seeing it come to you. And I recommend it to motion me to approve both of those items, please, so the longer, was that deserved? I recommend you approve both of those jointly, because they're basically the same item.
Let me read the next one, I can read the next one, maybe we can look together.
Yes.
And the next one is gonna be item three B?
E and I.
I have E is the wall. Okay, three F, consideration in action to appoint a representative in Florisville Reinvestment Zone Number One to function as an authorized signature on the tax investment fund for the purpose of transferring amounts in the fund to the Riverbend Development Corporation in accordance with the tri-party agreement, this person being Mr. Baker. Can I think of this person's name?
Tommy Baker.
Tommy Baker. And can I have a motion for both E and F?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing Tommy Baker, representative appointed by the City of Florisville to Florisville Reinvestment Zone Number One to function as an authorized signature of the tax investment fund for purpose of transferring amounts in the funds to Riverbend Development Corporation in accordance with the tri-party agreement.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Nito, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero. Thank you for the housekeeping, all of you. Okay, item three G. Mayor, if I can make a request that we, um, start with or finish up, um, we do item H, because we have the engineer, um, Pave Dawson here on the replat. Yes.
I would have you up a while ago.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item three H, consideration in action to approve the replat of the Walmart Supercenter Edition, Hughes Family Farms LTD, who's the owner of the Walmart Supercenter Edition replat, is proposed two point two three eight acre replat of the existing lot four, proposed lot four A. This plan is to reroute the existing public drainage eastmen to increase the developable area of the lot. Mayor and council, what we have here is the purpose of this replat is to relocate a drainage eastmen that was previously created on lot four by the original subdivision flat. Um, the name of the flat is called the Walmart Supercenter Edition. The eastmen relocation will require the construction of a proposed underground box culvert along an alignment near the lot's western boundary. This eastmen relocation and box culvert construction will allow regarding of a lot for more useful building and parking space. Uh, Mr. Heimer did review the, the plans, the civil plans and the plaque, and he does recommend approval of the replat and the civil construction as prepared by Pave Dawson. Um, I have Mr. Banks? Yes, I have Banks here for Pave Dawson, um, and he's the one that, uh, is the engineer working on the flat, and, um, also, the flat, the replat was passed by the planning and zoning last way that lies the line. You have any questions? Any questions? Citizens' comments?
Mayor, do we have an document to the calendar at the time?
Yes. Yes, we have the, we have the plan. But if I, if you have to be so kind, actually, we may have to find it.
I make a motion to approve the replat of Walmart Supercenter Edition, Hughes Valley Farms LTD, who's the owner of the Walmart Supercenter Edition replat, is proposed two point two three eight acre replat, the existing lot four, proposed lot four A, this replat is to reroute the existing public drainage, which increases the developable area of the lot.
I have a motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to three G, consideration in action to approve variance for the size of the manufactured home at the property of nine twenty-nine Second Street, a variance of two hundred and sixteen feet is necessary, under the Code of Orders, chapter one one five three point zero three zero, section H, Cindy.
Okay, the City of Florisville, we did receive an application from Adolf Medina on June twenty-fifth, the legal address of the center operates nine twenty-nine second, the applicant is requesting a variance for the size of his manufactured home, the size of this, of the home of Mr. Medina would like to purchase is seven hundred and eighty foot square feet, which requires a variance of two hundred and sixteen square feet, and of course, according to chapter one fifty-three oh three oh, uh, section H, it has to have a minimum of a thousand square feet, and of course, not a limit of fifteen years old. Um, Mr. Medina is grandfather for the size of this lot, which is, he has a fifty-foot frontage, a seventy-five-foot depth, with a total square footage of three thousand seven hundred and fifty, he is not gonna be more than forty percent of the lot, so he's okay with that, um, all the utilities are currently in place, he is not in a theme of flood hazard area, and the manufactured home is a two thousand fourteen, um, I have received all the signatures, all the necessary information for this application, for this permit.
And I believe y'all got a copy of the, of what the aerial view. Just a sweet word, he's actually, if you know where the Sacred Heart base lot is, he's on Second Street, that's.
Professor Dill.
Mayor, I'm looking to approve the variance for the size of the manufactured home at the property of nine twenty-nine Second Street, a variance of two hundred and fifteen feet is necessary in the Code of Orders, chapter one one five three point zero three zero, section H.
I second.
Yeah, a motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilman Nieto. Should've taken citizens' comments, and I'll take it too.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero. Okay, now let's go to, that's it, right?
On and four.